This is Mike.
Yes, sir.
Is everybody here? I'd like to call the county council meeting order tonight.
It sounds good out here.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, it sounds good out here.
I called the county council meeting order tonight, uh, November 13th, 2018. We've got a pretty good agenda tonight. It might be a lengthy meeting, I hope not, but before we get started, I'd like to, uh, thank everyone that participated in the recent elections and congratulate everybody that got elected. And a personal thanks from me to all the registration elections for doing what they do to, uh, make our elections work so well. It takes a lot of work, registration, elections, to make everything work, and we, it worked real well the last several years. I can't remember the last time we had a problem with it. But we have a lot of people that, uh, comes in and works poles and so forth, and I'd like to all thanks to them. Another thing I'd like to thank, all our veterans around this country that served and the ones that are serving, we have veterans, they, uh, let's all remember all the veterans our past and our ones that are serving. With that, I'll ask Mr. Thompson to have our implication tonight, and then we'll say our place least. Now that, I'd ask everyone to stand.
First, we think that it's up to you to come together as a group to work to better Lawrence County. We ask you to watch over us as we make these decisions. You guys can make the best decisions with assistance of this county. We ask you to keep us safe as we return home, watch overs in the following week. Is your name the most humble, or?
I'm glad to live in this city of honor, the United States of America, and to be repented of which it stands, one nation under God, in a dismal, liberty and justice for all.
First thing tonight is approval of our agenda. We have an added deployment matter in the state session for coroner, IT, planning, assistant public works director, or anything else to be added to our agenda tonight. If not, I'll ask for motion to approve our agenda.
So, sir.
Motion to second, all in favor, raise right hand. Seven, two, go. Next is approval of our minutes for our previous meetings, October 23rd, our regular meeting 2018. I'll ask, uh, do we have any additions or deletions? If none, I'll ask for motion to approve our October 23rd, 2018 regular meeting minutes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to second, all in favor, raise right hand. Seven, two, go. We have council committee on planning and government mental affairs meeting October 24th, 2018. Uh, do we have any additions or deletions left? If none, I'll ask for motion to approve our October 24th county council committee on planning and government mental affairs meeting.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Motion to second, all in favor, raise right hand. Seven, two, go. And I understand the scheduled meeting on November 8th was canceled. So, next on our agenda will be reports to council, animal control. Mr. Pitts asked for the animal control be, uh, presented to council at this meeting, and that's what this has called.
Billy, have you got something that I've been already?
Yeah, I've got that pulled up, although.
Is it PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Yeah, just stick it in there.
Good evening, council. I'm Charles Gilmore, Lawrence County, Animal Control leader, and I'm a job since April of 2017. Uh, so this is really my second budget session that we've been on right now. Each month we keep data on each animals that are brought into our shelter, and as you know, we just opened up our shelter. In October 2018, we had a total of 129 intakes of dogs. At the end of the month, we had a total disposition, final disposition of 132. Seventy-one of these animals were rescued, 43 were adopted, 16 was returned to owners, and unfortunately, we had to euthanize two. Wasn't because of space and things, caused their demeanor, or they was injured. We didn't have none die in the shelter. Dispatch law, we are dispatched through public works, uh, each day. Last month, we had a total number of 175 that was dispatched. Out of that 175, 127, excuse me, were from the county, City of Clinton, 22, City of Lawrence, 21, Town of Cross Hill, three, and the town, the town of Great Ork, two. And that's kind of the percentage of the calls that we did each month. The total intake summary breakdown of the 129 animals, citizen turnings, which are people riding around, picking up animals that they see may be stray off the side of busy highways, things like that, was 21. We had approximately 23 that was on surrenders, which citizens could no longer take care of them. We had $1 life per October, which we had to keep the dog 10 days without DHD, and we picked up a total of 84 strays throughout the county and the cities. Animal controls, near the data stats, dogs picked up by precincts in the county, we picked up 784. This is from January until October. City of Clinton, 111, City of Lawrence, 97, Great Ork, 15, and Cross Hill. Total number as of October, 31, is 1,015. Here's a chart that shows our percentages. This is right here is in 2017 when we started taking, uh, stats, using Shelter Pro and all that. You see right here, we was around about 16% euthanized rate. I think when Mr. Rush hired me, he estimated high that we was at 22% euthanasia. So here's the beginning of 2018. Uh, as you see, this line up here is what our yearly average is, and it's right at 5.73% euthanasia. Considering the number of dogs that we pick up per month and to date, that's a respectable number compared to other counties. We've been consistent with rescue rates, uh, consistent with adoption rates, consistence with return to owners, and one thing we know, sometime always pick up, so we kind of breach. And when we see 12% euthanized rate in July and all that, we're talking probably nine animals. Again, that's disposition of, uh, animals that can't be adopted out of or injured animals. Year total, I think this is a big number, and if you look at the live release, which are rescues, uh, adoptions, and return owners, 94% of that 1,015 have been live release, and only 6% have been euthanized. That's a big number in Lawrence County. Right now, we're in the fifth or sixth month of the budgets, budget right now, and from July to October, we have never had this problem since I've been here. We've done about a thousand, not thousand, 115 adoptions. Under state law, each adoption, at least the sheltered, must be spayed and neutered. You multiply that 115 by $85, which is our cost, that's around $9,775. Our budget for this year for that particular line item is on 18,000. And we've collected since that time approximately 5,095 for the last six months. For the total month, for the total year, we've collected over $10,060. That's from the shelter. And what I'm kind of asking, that if we could do it in the 2019, 2020 budget, if we could amend, uh, our budget where the money taken in from the shelter can be placed back into that line item to give us a little surplus where we can be proactive in spaying neuter. And, you know, we can be proactive in the cat colonies that are feral, and also give them back to the community and try and get their atmospheres. And that's part of controlling the population of animals. Right now, I'm investigating a mobile spay clinic that is located out of Lexington. They come down, and I think their average spay neuter is around $70 per animal. What I'm trying to do is to subsidize some of that cost to citizens. Last year, during, when we had the $23,000 in our budget, we was able to subsidize at county cost approximately 40 spay neuter to citizens of the county, which was a good turnout. I think we, we gave out 40, and we probably had at least 170 people come out in four hours, trying to get those certificates. Like I said, we're trying to figure out a way that we can subsidize the cost. If a spay neuter is approximately $70, if we can cut that in half and, um, give that to the, you know, citizens that are trying to take care of the population and, and to the animals. And we also, we've got a new group that's out, it's called Heart of Lawrence County. I'm sure that all y'all are aware of the animal abuse that we've been having throughout the county in the past year. All of them out, and I'd like to thank Sheriff Reynolds for assisting us in making these failing cases. The cost alone for two or three of these dogs that Heart has picked up has been approximately $3,000. That would have been, that's the money that did come out of our budget. They raised the money through local donations, and in fact statewide and national donations to get these animals treated and back to good health. And also trying to get them to get grants for spaying neuter programs, TNRs, which helped the, uh, feral cat problems that we have. And we've got, I'm sure everyone of y'all in your communities had that problem, and that's something that's been hiding behind the county for years and years. Like I said, Heart of Lawrence County, they're dedicated to the shelter. They're a 501(c)(1) group, which is nonprofit. They help us with animal abuse cases. They're dedicated with shelter, vet medicines such as heart worms, uh, Pardo, distemper shots. They also give us flea and worm medicine and provide a heartworm medicine. During the last prior event that we had for adoption, they provided all of the animals rabies vaccines, vaccines before they left the shelter. In November 1st, we started microchipping all animals that were adopted in Lawrence County. This is hopefully will be official, but in case one gets loose, we can scan, and we know exactly where it came from, and get it back to the owner's center later. Like I said, we were working with them possible TNR, type of listed feral cats. They started a food bank, which with the last budget, we had to cut our, uh, food budget about $500 to $1,000, I think. Right now, we're at 55% of that budget. And, uh, so they're asking for donations for their shelter. They're also helping with some of the cat and feral, uh, catch problems, and they have their ability to write grants through Nationwide, Fannie Mae, Bob Barber's federal, I guess, part of his spay neuter program. Future Lawrence County litter and animal control, doing process 2018. If we could amend the department to allow money collected at the shelter to be placed back to the professional service, which is our spay neuter, in hopes to be proactive in the community, trying to build a relationship with the Humane Society and get them on board with that. Being update animal control ordinances. Right now, the orders that we've got, number 735, is the newest ordinance, but it's not well defined. It's the interpretation of each person who has it. We don't have nowhere in there where if an animal is chained up, should it be on a six-foot chain compared to a 12-foot chain? You can go to court, and the judge might agree to a six-foot chain. Just need, need better definitions going forward. With the, with the, um, transfer of the new sheriff, one thing that, that our department faced was that we were no longer able to write on the state statute. Lawrence County does and always have a little, uh, problem. We had it back in 1990 when I was here first time around. Right now, we have no ordinances that addresses people illegal dumping, or people who are, for example, roofers who may be carrying load uncovered and things like that. This is definitely needed in our county so we can be more proactive when we go on calls. That's it? Any questions?
Mr. Gilmore, uh, I don't think there's anybody up here with an objective. You taking that money, a little bit of money, you take into that animal shelter and put it back in good use, spray and neuter. I don't know what we'd have to do to get that started. What we have to do within the budget?
Your pleasure, mister.
How does everybody else in council think about that?
Would it be cleaner for him to estimate the budget to the level of program he wants, and then just continue to let that take in money, despite being a general tone, and without a cleaner accounting way? I, I agree with you, same money was.
May I answer that, sir? My opinion, we had a budget of $23,000, which, you know, we left, I think we left in the budget 15,000. With that money, that if we could say we upped the budget back to the $23,000 for professional services, the money that we collect during the adoptions and return home fees, that money can be proactive into a spay neuter program throughout the county. Unfortunately, animal control, like we're 10 months into the year, we're up to $1,015 right now, and we don't face the hit at least 13, 1400. One of the areas that desperately needs to be addressed is payment. We have people who want it, but they're low income, and anything that we can help subsidize that with more money coming into our budget, it's going to be a bit of county, it's going to be a bit of citizens, we're not having dogs attacking, tearing up trash, and things like that. And it's also going to help with spay and feral colony cats and things like that. For example, Woodton Center, I think they did a, uh, TNR with a lady in shape, she, you know, weekend, or May 2 weekends, she tracked over 38 cats at Woodton Center Lawn, and she had them all spayed and neutered and released back into their natural habitat. Cats are healthier, so, but, uh, but to me, one, one thing that we have to be proactive in.
I don't disagree with you, be proactive, I'm just thinking in terms of how to, how to make the, the budget.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I mean, that great work that you're doing, Mr. Gilmore, and the Heart of, uh, LCAC, some really good things going on, like with partnerships, those ideas. With the, you mentioned the, um, ordinance 735, I'm looking at those definitions, and I'm hoping for a visit to that ordinance and looking at that, and also the illegal dumping. Currently, what are our, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Crookshanks, but what are our, we have, we have an ordinance in place for litter, I mean, for trash. So, what else do we need to do to address that issue currently, or what would you recommend?
I think it's probably something the planning commission would need to look at, is to do exactly. You know, and I understand what Mr. Gilmore said, sometimes you can refine and define too specifically where there isn't any wiggle room one way or the other, or you can be too broad to where there is wiggle room for interpretation. I, you know, I kind of leave it aside of letting a little bit of judicial interpretation go into force with some of these, but, uh, you know, I, it's been a long time since I've looked at, uh, I've looked at the control situation. We do have things in place, they probably need to be updated, um, the council. I think it's something that we need to consider to look at, and council, of course, directed that way, and, 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 and.
I think that would be a good thing to revisit that, and, um, I know I've recommended to citizens before in the county to put up deer cams and for problematic areas, try to get license plate numbers, and, um, that's something I have no tolerance for, so dumping trash in our county, so, um, but thank you.
Well, it's just, it's just, right now, we're at the, I'm not going to say the mercy of the sheriff department, but once we was formed as a power enforcement, the state statutes we can no longer use because they, they just leave the rest and things like that.
You have any point to it?
No, not at this time.
Mr. Diamond?
You were talking mostly about once, uh, how is cat population?
Cat population?
And I was thinking that, have, have you all told anybody that you all couldn't take anymore cats, you all have a lot of them?
I was first animal control officer in 1991, Mr. Scott Hollis was here. We, we don't have the facilities to take cats, uh, so different beast in, in animal Most of the other counties have a separate building that they put cages in and play areas for cats. What's important for us, if we, you know, I look at cat population, and if someone is, for example, feeding a cat, and someone complains about the, all the cats in the neighborhood, what legal right do I have to enforce the law if I have no way to put in the facilities like I do dogs? So, one of the objectives that we have is that we can recognize the stray cat, feral cat problems, owners who can't spay neuter, we can address with that option.
And we have the very shield, you say, open the door to the shelter?
We, we've opened up 16 cattle shelters back to first October. That's one that, that was with the, with the City of Clinton, City of Lawrence.
What's out there is already, it was two shelters.
Yeah.
Together, the third one's the new one, just.
So, we operate on 43 shelters right now.
Mr. Diamond?
No questions right now?
Yes, um, Mr. Gilmore, they, can you tell us where you are with the volunteers that were going to come to the shelter to help feed and bathe and?
We, we have, we have approximately 35 applications, but we only have maybe four that religiously come out and help us. We do have a, uh, it's called Helping the Dogs of Lawrence County Animal Control. It's a private page where they come out, take pictures of the animals, show pictures that we take, and they reach out to the rescues and doctors, and since we started that page, it's been, you know, you see the, the.
So, we're allowing volunteers to come and to work in the shelter, for lack of better words?
Yes.
All right, good. Secondly, um, I think that's, I think you've hit on a point that we have got to address a stray cat population in our county. I get calls all the time about cats in Southern Florida County. So, if it's a shelter that we need in order to pick up the stray cats, then that's what I think we should at least try to work towards in a plan for that, because that is a very big problem in this county. But I thank you for your report. Thank you for what you and your folks are doing in, uh, area.
Does anybody want to make a motion to amend the budget to put that little bit of money back in the animal control?
Sure.
What are your questions?
I'm not sure how to make the motion.
What we have to do, Mr. Kim?
The, uh, animal control was part of the 210 and the ICE for our Southwest Enterprise fund. As you know, the request was to raise the fee from $60, which hasn't been raised in 12 years, to $72. Council only chose to, with what's going on with the transfer station and all, we're hoping that the numbers will come out a little more favorable than where they were last year, but that account is not bringing enough money to pay for itself. These revenues that come in through animal control are also in that same fund, so, um, it's probably something that'd be more appropriate, in my opinion, to take a good hard look at, and we'll get some better numbers in the spring with the transfer station and operations there, so that y'all have a good understanding during the budget conversation of the effects. It's just a small effect, don't get me wrong, but I think it'd probably be best we just wait until we do the budget discussion.
I think it'd be a good idea when you have a count-wise spay and neuter thing, what is, when you neuter, you neuter a dog and you spay a cat?
You neuter a dog and you spay a thing, that's.
Okay. I'm not animal person, but all for it to the people, you know, that's, it's got a cat and they want to have it spayed, you know, you can do that, and that cat's spayed around the house, he don't wander off.
And plus, you know, in, in reality, when you're, uh...
Might help control the population a little bit.
If you, in reality, if you look at statistics, uh, one cat, one male and one female cat over a course of three years, can multiply to 181,000.
Well, I'll let Mr. Kim look into that and maybe get back with us on that thing, and I appreciate what you do, and that's a hard job to do, it's a hard job to satisfy everybody, I understand.
Well, we're just trying to be positive and, and get more of the cattle out to get along with the, I think. Well, we're just trying to be positive and get what we can out to get along with nothing. We, the talks and, and just go that out.
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
Our next item on our agenda from A to E concerns our committee meeting on planning and other governmental affairs. I'm going to call on Diane to address that meeting because A through E, it doesn't require, it doesn't require a motion or a second, just a discussion and a vote. And so let her go with the committee meeting about the recommendations from this committee meeting. Would you like to do that, Diane?
I'll do my best. The committee met on the twenty-fourth. And from that committee meeting, the person serving on that committee is Baker Pitts, Stuart Jones, and myself. And these are some recommendations we are bringing back to county council that we, they are listed on your sheet. We start posting off transactions from the P cards online. And the other one is that we will, we looked at the travel policy and we updated the travel policy as well as the procurement card policy, we updated that. We also updated the gas card policy. And we also come up with a policy stating that, starting with new hires, that we would not, you know, anybody that working out of the county could not take a county car home. Those are the four things that we discussed. And all those, when we discussed them, we come back with full consensus from all members of the committee to bring it back to county council as stated.
All right, thank you.
The first one, just a point of clarification. If council wants to take action on all the items at once, the item involving.
How many did I get the order?
Okay, well, we get to take home, that's actually an ordinance change that's going to be there.
Let's type the order down. The first one, A, is posting of transactions online. The subcommittee voted to recommend the full council that all credit card transactions and all checks registered be placed online starting one-on-one night thing. With that, I'm open for discussion if anyone wants to discuss that. And I'll start with Mr. Pitts.
No discussion, Mr. Chairman?
No discussion.
Ms. Anne? Ms. Knight?
Nothing.
Mr. Johnson?
I've said a lot on this topic, sir, so no discussion tonight on this.
Mr. Thompson? Okay, I'm going to call on a vote on this since it don't require a motion or a second since it's coming out of a committee. All in favor of doing what subcommittee recommended, raise your right hand. Seven blue, right? All right, next is procurement card policy. The subcommittee voted to recommend the full council approve the revised procurement card policy. That's credit card, we talking about credit cards on all of this. Do we have any discussion on that? I'll start with Mr. Thompson.
I'm Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Knight?
Well, I don't understand the, I don't have a credit card. I thought we had gotten proof of this. Didn't think it was no more a problem. Thought they took them all up, pick them up and authorized to have a credit card.
It says basically putting guidelines out there, not there for people to follow to use credit card. That's what it is, set the guidelines. Ms. Anne?
None.
Mr. McGinn?
None.
Mr. Pitts?
Yes, sir. After this, in talking with Mr. Lindley and Joey Avery, I would like for council to consider the following. That in an emergency procurement situation, a county department head would be allowed to expend up to fifteen hundred dollars for emergency purposes only and subsequently must notify the county administrator and the finance director within forty-eight hours. Let me tell you why I am suggesting this. If there is an emergency situation, such as Joey Avery and the missing person case we had, you may recall that last year. If we have a lot of volunteers out there volunteering, and the same thing could be for an extensive structure fire, this policy, if it passes like I had suggested at the committee meeting, and I did, a lot of times we can make mistakes by backing us into a corner, then those department heads, Joey and Greg Lindley, would not be allowed to go to wherever and purchase whatever in terms of water or food for those volunteers if this policy passes as it is written. That is what I believe. Therefore, I would like to, for council to consider the amended motion to include up to fifteen hundred dollars in an emergency procurement situation by department heads only with the following notification to the county administrator and the finance director within forty-eight hours. I hope I explained that.
Is that under unauthorized procurement? What do you put it, where do we?
It would be in addition to it.
To the unauthorized?
It would be under emergency procurement. It would have to be added.
Oh, add, okay.
Could the word emergency be removed from that? I'm saying in this situation, if Greg Lindley loaded up twenty people to go to Columbia for training or something, they're going to be down there all day. And ten of those people were volunteers in this county. Are we saying that we got volunteers out there that are spending their own time to work for this county? And they're going to climb, get the train, and all this is on their time, they're not getting paid for, and then we're going to ask them to pay for their own labor?
No, sir, that was not the intent at all. I'm agreeing with you, that was not the intent, or at least it wasn't my intent, to penalize volunteers for their service at all. The intent was to prevent any potential abuse of credit card expenditure.
But so, could that be considered under that motion, you know, to be able to do something like that?
I think if we remove the word emergency, I think that's a possibility. But I might recognize county administrator, Mr. Kim, this time.
Thank you. I think under the travel policies probably would have to be addressed. And I think we did consider that in the travel policy, if I'm not mistaken. I'm just going to pull that out and see what we.
I'd like to call on Greg Lindley. Would you come up and tell me and council your situation? And I know Joey Avery, where is Joey Avery? You come up to and tell your situation in this time.
My only concern with the procurement card policy change was, I believe it was in there, no food could be purchased. And my concern is, it's just as stated, it's not every day, it's not every week, but we do for time to time have emergencies, emergency scenes where we need to bring in, they've been out there all night, and you bring in biscuits, and you bring in food, gatherings of water, and we just try not to have a policy that will tie our hands in not being able to provide those things to those volunteers or play staff if they've been out there for an extended period of time. And on top of, if we have a class or something going on, that we have a lot of volunteers and we still might be able to provide them some meals if they're taking their time out of the attendant flights.
Yeah, and that was brought up, and I think Councilman Pitts actually brought this up as a topic for discussion. And on page two of the procurement policy, it does say, out-of-town meals for county travel are not permitted to be charged without preapproval from the county administrator. So in those particular cases, of course, we would support our volunteers. And that's why that particular clause, I knew we had addressed that somewhere as far as taking care of that situation. Now, the emergency.
Could you add on that, approve within twenty-four hours of the purchase? Could you put that?
Sure, I mean, it can be approved as soon as he gets in touch with me. We get in touch pretty regularly, so that's proof. Anything to support our volunteers by all means, absolutely. And the future about emergency services, emergency procurement during situations where we need to get ice and drinks and food for volunteers who are out there taking care of situations like the lost child, I think it was, those kinds of situations. We can easily add that as an amendment if that wasn't, if that was overlooked in there. But we have addressed that particular concern about making sure we're able to still take care of these volunteers. We're not making any money. It's the least we could do to support them, especially when we're doing things like training and fire training, has a lot of training, a lot of Joey's training, those kinds of things. Those, I think, we did address in the P card policy.
Well, I do appreciate it, thanks very much.
There's a lot of people, just, for instance, a short time ago, you had a trailer wreck over on other side of twenty-five and the next day, one foot a little bit further over another side of where it shows, and they spent several hours out there on the highway that day and directing traffic and cleaning the mess and everything else. And sometimes these fellows might be out there ten or twelve hours. And we asked a lot of these people to volunteer to go out there and do that. What would we do without? This is the least thing we can do for the volunteer firemen and volunteer, everybody else that volunteers in this county. It's the least we can do. But you, you put that in a motion?
Yes, sir.
So it's going forward, all right. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion and second, any further, it's good. Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Seven blue, right? All right, next is the travel policy. And the subcommittee voted to recommend the full county council to approve the revised policy on travel. Mr. Dine?
If one of you have a copy in your pro, in your, in your pack or?
The revised travel policy is in your package.
And we went through it, and the only thing I know we're going to add, we don't have to add anything other. We add, to the procurement card, we add another vendor, but the travel, it covers what was stated earlier in reference to volunteers. It's already in the travel policy, so.
And the travel policy has probably been the most contentious because our previous travel policy was not, not very well defined. And that's the area that we've really tightened up with in terms of this particular travel policy. So this travel policy, I think, is going to address a lot of the questions that were raised by the citizens who did the open records request.
Okay, that's, coming from subcommittee, it won't require a motion or a second. If there's no any further, no further discussion on it, we're voting on approving our travel policy. All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven blue, right? Next is the gas card policy. The subcommittee voted to move, recommend the full council approve the revised gas card policy. And I don't know exactly what we revised on that. But it's basically just put the guy behind, correct. Does anyone have any discussion on that?
It's basically just posting of the statements online, basically. That's what the actual vote was.
Any further, it's good. If not, all in favor, raise your right hand to approve this. Seven blue, right? Next, the committee recommended about the take-home vehicle policy. Subcommittee voted to recommend the full county to disallow personal use of county vehicles across county line for all future hires.
Now, I would like to point out, thanks to Diane, she brought forth the ordinance that we had, ordinance seven thirty-six. This would actually be, I believe, an amendment to ordinance seven thirty-six. Now, seven thirty-six, in my opinion, doesn't actually need to be an ordinance. We need to go through the process of cleaning up this and taking it out of the ordinance. It really needs to be a policy of county council, it doesn't need to be an ordinance. So we will continue to bring this forward to county council anyways, through, maybe not right away, but we will get this cleaned up and get this out of the ordinance through three readings and a public hearing to get this ordinance nullified. And then it will be just simply a policy. And that policy can be amended as need be by, by county council. Policies are not really something, in my opinion, that belong in ordinance. It's ordinance or something that are more regulatory in nature. What we're talking about is more of a, is a policy that's guiding us internally.
Now, this does not include any claims for a sheriff's department vehicle, right?
As much as I wish we could, and we can't control it, I don't think.
They're in control of the sheriff. If not county, they're employees, they are officers.
What about emergency vehicle? Like a, like we got a, a chief of, we got several chiefs in the county that drive a real quick, is that talking about them too?
For future hires.
Future hires.
Yeah, this would be for future hires. Future hires would not have that, that privilege of taking home a county vehicle, which kind of leads to a little bit of a problem because they'll definitely have to respond to emergency situations, and that's, that's useful.
Those people out there, they're on call twenty-four hours a day. I'm not saying they're on call twenty-four hours a day, but they get called out up to twenty-four hours a day. And if, if, they got to respond to emergency and they got to come over here to the county and pick that vehicle up before they go to that emergency, what, what's going to happen to them? It's going to take them twice as long or three times as long to get to the emergency. That's the idea of having that vehicle with them, with them.
Of course, the flip side of that is we could only hire in-resident people for those positions. That's the flip side of it.
The flip side to it too is being able to, you know how hard it is to hire people and hire people, you know, good people that you can depend on. A lot of times you have to give the other county.
That's true. That's true.
For clarification, the motion.
And I'll say.
Motion reads personal use, not.
Huh?
It says disallow, personal use, not disallow travel.
But it would disallow, it would disallow an emergency service person from taking the vehicle beyond the county line.
Correct.
Now, this, this particular subject, again, is an ordinance. It is going to have to go through three readings and a public hearing because it does not need to be in the ordinance book. So we will have three, three chances to have further discussion on this subject if you want to revisit it when we start having a conversation. And we'll, we'll start putting this on the agenda that, start having this conversation of looking at that overall vehicle use policy.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, it's been recommended by the subcommittee that the use of county vehicle across county lines for all future hire. Do we want to go ahead and vote on that?
No, sir.
So we're going to put that vote out?
I'll make a motion to table that. If that's the official way to do it, I think.
We got motion to table, we have a second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Vote, sign in.
We didn't want to vote on it, because we worked with that too this.
That's six, four, and one extension.
Yes.
And I'd like to say that, I'd like to thank the committee. I attended that meeting and it was a very good meeting, it was almost two hours. It was really going through and, and everything I feel was looked at. And it's, I've always said that things are not written in stone. If we have a situation out here that concerns our department heads where this is not working for them, please bring back county council and bring our attention and see what we can fix. We did the best we could to try to address these credit cards, abusive credit cards. I'm not saying they were abusive credit cards, but they, some of them it was questionable. And, but, but if you have a problem anytime in the future with this, please bring back county council. Next on our agenda is a public hearing ordinance 853, men in ordinance 830, the deep island mobile home. Mr. Cruz, yeah?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, page two of the ordinance, paragraph five is the amendment to delete the underpinning with brick masonry concrete, which is per the end ordinance 830. That's the order change that will be made with the passage of this ordinance.
Okay, this is public hearing, oh, the public hearing ordinance 853 is now open. If you have anything to say, come forward, state your name and tell us about it. The public hearing is now open. If there's no one to address the public hearing, I close the public hearing. I last motion for third reading ordinance 853.
Someone to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven blue. Next, the second reading ordinance 854, this is amendment in ordinance 831, subcommittee, Mr. Cruz, yeah?
Yes, sir, this council took by title only, excuse me, it's last meeting. If you look on page two of the ordinance, paragraph five, there were two exemptions that the planning commission has recommended dealing with recombinations of portions previously planted properties and divisions of property invested by parcels. This was kind of to help with rural areas of the county, issues of having to combine the properties. You remember a month or so ago, we had the issue of White Plains Farms. Where the company was buying a career farm parcel of land, combined those together and one parcel under the old way, if they did not have the exemption on that, they would have had to per the all of the stuff in the roadways. So this, this is a very good change that's being made to the subdivision ordinance. We would highly recommend that the planning commission work on this and approve on second reading.
Okay, with that being said, I last for motion, second reading ordinance 854?
Someone to approve, ordinance 854.
Do we have a second?
Second.
That's second, any further discussion? None, all in favor, raise your right hand. Seven blue. Next on our agenda is funding source for our heat and ventilation air addition project Hillcrest project. Mr. Bill Wilson, Mr. Canyon.
Mr. Bill Wilson. And Mr. Dan Satterfield now.
All right, I appreciate y'all letting me be here tonight to be. Last Thursday, we accepted bids on the HVAC for Hillcrest Square. Now, we've already had the bid open for the roof. What we're dealing with is this area right here. This, you're looking at the front of the building right here. We're discussing the left-hand side of it right now. Bids came in, we had three contractors, we actually had four, one backed out at the last minute. We had three bids on the HVAC. Low bid was local bidder at 1.2 million, 49,544. Now, that's just getting us half of the building right now, the left-hand side of the building. The most occupied and most used side of the building. We, this is taking the units off the building, placing them outside along the outer edges of the building. New duct work, new electrical controls, new thermostats, zone control, heating and air. This is top of the line, biggest thing for our budget. I'm not sure where we were as far as the number, what we anticipated, what we looked at, what we looked for as far as a number for the heating and air. To do the whole building, you are looking at 2.5 million dollars. To do the whole building. Now, what we've come up with, Mr. Satterfield, Mr. Allen Robinson, our building ground department, is what's on the building now, the tags, ID tags on are showing 1997. There are 22 refrigerant, which is going to go obsolete within the next year or so. Five years ago, we were spending about $10,000 a year HVAC wise for the whole building. That has grown to this past budget year, we spent a little over 40,000 in maintenance costs. Units are up, up to around 50% efficiency is all we've got working for us now. What we're planning on installing, it has a 90 to 95% efficiency rate. The buildings and grounds department averages three calls per week for troubleshooting on heating and air. Could be something simple, our luck has been made. So, and, and as the season changes, it gets hotter, or as this case now, it's getting colder, the calls go up, we're gonna average about five calls a week. The good side, doing this, we are looking, we're expecting $150,000 savings in our electrical bills for that building for the net over a four-year period. And that's not, that's just the bill, that, that's not including the maintenance cost we're gonna save by, by doing a turnkey job with duct work, with the electronic controls, the electronic monitoring and everything. There's more savings there. That is not factored into that one figure. The warranty that we are getting on this system is a 10-year parts and, uh, parts warranty. That covers the inside of the, inside of the building, the units there, any work inside the building, any work on the outside units, compressor failure, whatever, 10-year warranty. The, the zone control thermostats and things for the office buildings is, is what we need now. What, what you have was the strip mall and it was, the end down here, this end here was mainly roses, if y'all remember. Now we've broken it up into offices, so somebody in the treasurer's office is liable to be controlling the thermostat for them, but probate court is freezing to death because they just adjusted theirs. And I, I found out just recently, we have a hallway here. Mr. Wood, you was over there when you was checking on some other things about a month or so ago. And there's a hallway next to, between treasurer's office and the assessor's office. That has a bathroom, has a men's and women's employee bathroom. There is a heater, a space heater that they're, the women are having to use in that bathroom because there's no heating air in that bathroom. So, you know, what we're looking for, what I'm looking for tonight, we've got to make a decision. We need this, we, we got to have the roof project moving to get, I mean, the HVAC project moving to get the roof project started too. Because this is a, this is going hand in hand, there's a lot of construction there. And what I'm asking for is, is your blessing to get this started on the left-hand side. Now, you're gonna ask about the right-hand side. Sam, can you turn it down so we can see a little bit better? Now, can everyone see the hand there? That's, you have two units right here, this is your main entrance. So we're taking from here all the way over, roughly around 11 and 12 units right there on that whole side. While that is in construction, the engineer is going to have the right-hand side done as far as the drawings and everything, and it's gonna just about mirror the left-hand side. So we're looking at, you know, doing that part while the construction is going on on the left side, doing the bids and everything for the right side. We need, like I said, we need your approval and the money to get started on this, to get to where we need to be. These units off, and they're gonna start on the roof. And these units are gonna start being placed on the outside, the exterior of the building on the left-hand side. And then they'll come in and start doing the mechanical work inside, the duct work. There will be, in that price of 1.2, we had to figure in, we're gonna lose some ceiling tiles like this. Hopefully we can save as much as we can, but that price was put in there to cover all of our bases. So that 1.2, 1.249,544 is for the left-hand side. We ask that you approve it, let us get started on it. We're out of Band-Aids.
Well, in that bid, does that all include all the duct work that all is gonna be doing inside the building?
Yes, sir, that is a turnkey job.
You got all new air handlers, they'll, they'll be inside the building, so they all have new duct work, right?
Right, because there's nothing on the roof anymore.
Will it be metal duct work?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a. Metal?
Yes, metal everywhere, flex, flex just to the diffusers about six feet of ones on each other.
Is Thomas Mechanical, that one that's right across the road from this building?
This is Chris Ormer. He's with Thomas Mechanical, he's the one that bid the project, they're the ones that won the project. All the things were low bidders. They have all the credentials, we've checked them, the engineer has checked all of the, the bid specs and everything. And we've got the green light everywhere. We need y'all.
So we're gonna, let me, let me ask you a couple questions, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
We're gonna pull the units off top of the building first, and they can start on the rest of the building.
Correct.
I get this concern about what we're gonna do here in the winter months to keep our forests and trees and our people from running off and going home.
What we're gonna do, they're gonna start on these exterior roofing wise, exterior parts, all the way down, back here, here, wherever these outline areas, here, here. They're gonna start the roof there. Then, we're going to start yanking these things, because you have crane running in there. We're gonna pull them all off at, at the same time on this end, you know, right now. They're gonna come off, you're gonna have.
You say that, and I think if we can work something out, I like, we don't want to, if we don't have to fall them off to save the people, if we can work something with a group or we can do a scheduling phase where we can pull three or four of them at a time, three or four of them at a time.
Crane was gonna be in your bid, right? So you have, you have, you probably have, I've done construction all my life, so you, you're pretty, pretty heavy rental there to bring in operator crane.
There's probably a lot of contingency built in there.
We work right here, I don't want the people across, I, we thought the same thing. And in my bid, I did include to mobilize a crane three times because I, and I was gonna discuss this with Billy after that, you know, what's we got to schedule that.
Well, unfortunately for you guys, I mean, it really is unfortunate, you could set the units on the ground, you could do most of your duct work or some of your airwork before you tore off all the others. But the, the timing, that's not.
The duct will be built, but we can't, you know, on the inside.
You don't pre-fab the duct.
Yeah. Before we tear out an area, we're gonna strategically try to move around the building.
And then with winter coming on and the off-heat, of course, we'll, we'll, I mentioned, if the people inside the building, they still need to work.
Now, one of the things we're dealing with right now is, and of course, this is not fair because we weren't around, some of us, probably most of us weren't around when the decision was made in the original construction. But what we're dealing with now is the original construction should have taken this into consideration. This is no longer one large open area, it's now a bunch of small areas. So what we're paying for today is to do what, I don't wanna say should have been done back when we took this thing over and turned, converted the building, but it really needed to be done at that point. The good thing is, is we got by for 20 years on 15-year units with what we did at the time. And I don't want to second judge the decision-making at the time, they may not have had the money to do what had to be done, but what we're suggesting now is to do it right.
Don't get me wrong there, I know that you guys know your bid, it's, I just, I think that they're working, so to be, they're also.
Yes. I got some questions, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Chris, your bid of 1249,544, that's all the units on the left-hand side of the building, right?
Yes.
No units on the right-hand side?
No units on the right-hand side.
All right, my next question is to Billy. In this bid tabulation sheet, if you, if you go back to the mechanical, all of those bids are relatively close. When we flip over to the roofing though, the low bidder is $200,000 less than the next bidder.
Yes, sir.
I'm concerned that he's missed something significant.
He hasn't.
Did y'all confirm that?
Yes, sir. Blunt Shepherd, Shepherd and Associates, who's handling this for us, went back and, and had them refigure, check and everything. They confirmed it, they're good with it. We're, we're following a contract back and forth now, we're waiting on their volley back to us. It is, right, these guys are hungry, they're coming off from those school projects from the summer, and they need to work through the winter. Now, I look back at some notes and stuff that Rob had originally had, and Rob had a, we, Rob had Cannon Roofing, if y'all remember, look at this, that was about four years ago with the data. And their best guess estimate to replace all of this was 540 back then. Now, you know, did someone miss the boat here, maybe? I don't know, but the bid has been reaffirmed and we are confident of it. And they are ready to contract.
And what type of roof is this going up here?
This is a TPO roof. Your favorite. But there'll be nothing else up there, so once the worker get off the roof, that's it.
How are we gonna play a part, Mr. Canyon?
That's my next question.
Well.
We need to consider how much money we're gonna have to have to do the whole project.
It looks like you're gonna need 2, 2 million, 800,000, you're gonna need about 3 million for the roof and the HVAC. About 100,000 of the second half of this is, is associated with the second half of it. But you're looking at somewhere in the 2.5 to 3 million dollar range for both the roof and the HVAC.
Are we gonna solicit bids for the second part of this roof or?
We are going to negotiate first with who's on there. We will, because it's, it's basically mirrored, you know, it's basically the same thing. But yes, we, we will, one or the other, or both.
It's not exactly mirrored, right? Because if I remember correctly, you had roses in what we're living on the left-hand side, you had several smaller.
You had food line was the biggest one.
You had food line was the biggest one, and then you had...
You're right. Well, that wasn't a food line, was it?
Eckers or Revco, whatever it was.
So, there's probably a firewall or some structure in there on the right-hand side.
Mr. Candy, I, I'm not sure. I did check with, um, the treasurer's office today, and there is two fifty-seven, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars.
Yeah, now, how are we gonna pay for it, the question? Uh, and the, and the original plan has always been, we're gonna utilize the Hillcrest bond money, which is two hundred fifty-seven thousand and some change. That's gonna make a small dent in the three million dollars, two and a half, three million dollars of roof. The remaining portion of it is gonna have to be paid for through a GO bond. Now, in the short term, we can fund it through cash, especially in, uh, looking at some of the other large projects that were council priorities, which we're gonna have a little bit further discussion on in a little bit in executive session. Uh, but depending on the overall scope of what council wants to move forward with, we're getting very close to the point where we're gonna need to move forward on issuing those bonds.
Do we own anything on the bond on Hillcrest Square?
Yes, we do.
You talking about the deep part of the building or the low part of the building?
The, the new part.
The new part.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, the other thing is, and that's why I asked my question, this bid on the roof is good for how long? Ninety days? We gotta move. If we're saving two hundred thousand dollars, uh, we have to move on. Do we have the funds to...
Don't let me interrupt you, but that bid on the roof, that's the bid, the whole thing, right?
That's the whole thing, yes.
And let me just say, let me just say, I'm not a fan of TPO roof. I'm not a roofer, not a son of a roofer, but I'll tell you this. It is hard plastic up there. If you throw a hammer on it, it's gonna cut it. But we can't afford a real roof, for lack of a better word. I'm just being honest. But I have conceded that with the equipment coming off of the roof, there shouldn't be anybody walking up on that roof. But we need to know what we're getting ready to do. So, it's not, well, I'm just, I've said I don't think so.
We didn't negotiate that long, and we got on the building, the bond on the building.
There, there is, there is, uh, three, and I apologize, I don't have the data right in front of it. I believe there's three. Uh, I have looked at the potential, uh, but again, this is part of some of the financial structure, and that we're gonna have to take a look at, uh, of looking at doing something with the existing. The ideal situation is that we would be able to keep the millage the same, or, or not have to increase it significantly to cover, uh, the increased cost. And there is, there was potential. I know the laws have changed, so there's, I don't wanna say that this is even possible anymore, but originally, when I first got here, I looked at the possibility of restructuring the existing debt, such that we could free up a, a certain amount of money, uh, and therefore keep the millage pretty much the same as far as what's out there in terms of bond and millage. Uh, there is potential that we could do some of that, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that it's not gonna be entirely possible for us to do everything we wanna do, or let me rephrase that, everything we need to do as far as, uh, construction in this county within our existing bond millage.
All right, we already got some of this money. How much money do we got?
You have two hundred and fifty-seven thousand and some change.
That was left over when we built the minestrata building.
Correct.
I was thinking more like four hundred thousand.
I'd like to tell you that's true, but I can't tell you. Now, now, you did say a hundred and fifty thousand was the savings over a four-year period on energy efficiency. So, I mean, you are getting some, uh, the savings. I, I usually use a fifteen-year life on, on these units, so, you know, a hundred and fifty over four years, uh, you know, you could at least double that, probably somewhere around a half million dollars in savings or more in terms of what we're gonna start paying in terms of the electricity. And I can tell you that one of our highest electrical bills, 'cause I signed the check registers over two weeks, is this building here. So, we will see some savings there, and I think Billy just said there's forty thousand dollars right now. We're using it in terms of maintenance that will pretty much go away for the most part over the initial life of this. So, there is some of this money that we will see as savings in our everyday O and M, uh, general fund. So, there will be some savings that we'll see there. It's just that painful thought of having to raise the millage to cover through the GO bond that we're gonna have to deal with.
So, I'd like to ask another question, Mr. Chairman. To the attorney, our county attorney, can we issue a tax anticipation note in preparation for the GO bonds?
You, you can do some advance funding, yes.
That's what I'm asking. So, if my little elementary math works up here, it's a total of one million, eight hundred thirty-five dollars, eight hundred thirty-five, nine hundred and twelve dollars. And I subtracted the two hundred fifty thousand that we have, leaving a need for the entire roof and the left side of the HVAC mechanical, a one million, five eighty-five, nine twelve. So, and I hate taxes. I will make a motion, Mr. Chairman, if we are prepared.
Before you make that motion, can I just throw out one more idea?
Sure.
Uh, we do have fund balance, so, uh, and I'm not sure about the cost of tax anticipation notice, but I'm sure there is some financing costs associated with that. Rather than, um, doing a financing to do the short-term borrowing, uh, on that, I would, uh, again, suggest, as I have originally, that we look at utilizing the fund balance from the general fund and borrow from ourselves, essentially saving those, uh, that, that debt service.
I agree with you.
One other thing before you make that motion, if you take into consideration the right-hand, like, the right-hand side area.
Well...
We can anticipate those costs now, or do we wanna do it at that right hand?
I'll be honest with you, I, you read my mind. If we go ahead and do it now, we'll only pay the issuance of the GO bonds once rather than twice, which would be about a hundred thousand dollars, is my guess, to issue bonds.
Which is why all along I've said that I think we should borrow from ourselves with the fund balance. I do have good fund balance numbers that I'm gonna release publicly this evening. Uh, I do have good fund balance numbers for us to be able to do this and borrow on our own, so that we can quantify everything we want to do as a council, including if we decide to do anything, which is substantial as far as multimillion dollars with the, the emergency services and the ENS and whatnot.
What, what's our audited fund balance?
Audited fund balance on the general fund, I wanna say it's about five point seven million.
There you go.
Well, if we borrow from ourselves, uh, we could get by along the, to where we got that second bid for the air conditioning.
Right.
And it wouldn't be any conflict with that if we put that out, the bid.
Correct.
We could borrow that from ourselves and then do what we got to do.
Correct.
That would be a good idea, I believe.
Correct. And also, you would be able to quantify what you exactly wanna do in terms of emergency services, uh, and pull all that into one GO bond, so that we could reduce that, uh, that, that, uh, cost for borrowing money all at the same time, recognizing that we would reimburse our general fund. Uh, now, there's a lot more discussion on general fund. It's very positive with the general fund fund balance, and I believe we've actually got some cash there that we can utilize. I am perfectly in favor of utilizing surplus cash, above twenty-five percent fund balance, uh, for one-time capital. I'm not in favor of it for reoccurring O and M. That is a structural deficiency, but I believe we do have some extra cash. All of that is a very complex picture, which I wanna present to you all over time, and we can have that net goal of keeping the millage increase on the GO as low as possible. Ideally, if we could dream, there would be no increase on the GO, but I can't guarantee you that. With the kinds of dollars we're talking about, I can almost guarantee you, it's not entirely possible for us to do that.
And that would, that would make sure we do the whole project?
The whole, this project would move forward. You would be able to utilize your cash now, uh, and then we would be able to, uh, we're getting closer to the point where we're gonna really need to have that conversation on GO bonding. But I think you all are getting very close on finalizing all of the very major priorities of county council. We'll, we'll be able to do that in the next six months or so, but we will be able to move forward with this project with the cash we have.
I tell you, one thing I'd rather this bid is, uh, we get a local contractor to do this, and if we have a problem, we haven't got a run to plum, we have to go plum, get somewhere else, get somebody to fix it. They did right across the street.
What kind of, um, you said, what kind of warranty kind of mechanical bill?
Ten-year.
Parts only?
Parts, yes.
Chris, I can throw in some labor?
We got first-year labor.
First-year labor, okay. And startup costs as well?
Yeah, it's all included.
Tag on to that, so we're gonna, we're gonna obviously save some of the maintenance, considerable amount of money. But there be some maintenance costs over that ten-year time. Does that require dealer maintenance, so that requires them to do that maintenance, or does that still allow us?
Probably allow us.
Filter change.
Yeah, filter change.
Filter change.
Oh, that's okay. No, I mean, there shouldn't be any maintenance. To, to keep that warranty.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to allow the county administrator to enter a contract with Thomas Mechanical in the amount of one million, two hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars to replace the HVAC equipment in Hillcrest Square on the left-hand side. Furthermore, I, this motion includes to authorize the county administrator to enter into a contract with Watson Associates Roofing to replace the roof with the entire older portion of Hillcrest Square in the amount of five hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred sixty-eight dollars to be paid out of the audited fund balance funds.
Just as a point of clarification, that's a temporary, uh, use of the audited, uh, of the, uh, fund balance funds with the long-term anticipation of potentially having to reduce some, uh, reimburse some or all of that.
Yes, sir.
Got a motion in the second. Uh, do we have any other question?
I just wanna make sure that we, um, in... I can go along, but I, I, I look at, maybe we could pay off some other bonds and steal some other, I don't know, though.
There is that potential.
There definitely is.
Yes, we will talk about that.
One other question I got. The duct work is gonna be in the ceiling in this building. It will be insulated, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I need to amend the motion, Mr. Chairman. I failed to say this. To use the funds after the expenditure of the two hundred fifty thousand dollars from the previous bond money. Does that make sense?
I don't know that you would need to amend that, but I think that would be understood, that that money is to be, you've already, council's already approved the use of that, those funds first.
Well, I agree. It's just as a matter of formality, I specifically stated the exact dollar amounts, which would be incorrect. That's why I'm doing that.
All right, does everyone understand the motion of this undertaking? Do you have any further questions? I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. That's six opposed, abstained. So, we got six for one standing.
Oh, you didn't see that?
I couldn't see, I didn't... Seven zero. I'm sorry, I didn't see. I know the department heads and employees is going, wanting to be glad to, to, uh, see this happening, and, uh, I want the employees to be very courteous to these people. They don't have to get in there and work, and it's gonna be a little aggravating, but it's gonna be, look what we're gonna have in the long run. We're not gonna have these units sitting up on roofs to punch holes in the roof, and, and it's gonna be, we're gonna save money in the long run, especially on that R twenty-two freeline. I mean, that's just about a four hundred dollar pound.
Chairman, the project, the two projects we manage, I guess, I would say, could all, could all sit in here?
Yes.
There is something to play with it.
Yeah, should I take just a moment and say, Billy, be as good a commitment as somebody else from this project here, and sell jobs, managing this cost. Just a little bit of legislative, one of the things we're getting back to in as far as savings is all the tarp that I saw today. Covering bally cabinets with bally batteries in those bally cabinets and trying to keep those cabinets dry, I was, uh, taking a side of how, how bad the roof is.
Might as well should get a ten percent of that two hundred thousand dollar savings, the second lowest bidder.
We can have all those tarp when we get there.
Thank you, Billy.
Now, when, when is it that you become an official number of, over the last year?
Oh, twenty, number two.
Oh, you, you already remember?
Yes. As I stated this morning, it's a good sign when you show up the second day.
I appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna move on to some new bids here. Resolution eighteen-dice-thirty-eight, I'm gonna call Mr. Cruz again.
Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, gonna bring in some money to help make it all, like, Mr. Cole, I'm gonna read this, so we can kinda give you a preview on Project Auburn.
How are we all? This is an expansion of one of, oh, expansion, an expansion of an existing industry here in the county, uh, looking to invest, uh, two and a half million dollars, six percent fee load, uh, with fifteen percent SSRC. And they'll, start in January one.
Capital approval, any job numbers showing up here?
Well, they're, probably will be, but they don't wanna make that public, I would say.
And our, our history with this company is that...
They've been in a long time.
Do I have a motion for resolution two thousand eighteen thirty-eight, inducement of resolution for Project Auburn?
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? None, all in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, the big first reading of the orders related to Project Auburn.
All right, do we have a motion, first reading order, is eight fifty-five, Project Auburn?
Seven to approve, eight fifty-five, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Resolution eighteen thirty-nine, JDA Barnes, Bailey Manor Acquisition.
If you call, Mr. Chairman, recently, we did a jet bond involving Presbyterian colleges, a method by which, uh, businesses and industries can borrow funds through this jet bond program. This is, uh, an acquisition, uh, by a company to acquire, it's ML Woodbridge, uh, London LLC, to acquire the Bailey Manor Retirement Home in London. All this, this is not any financial obligation of a county, if you remember, for, this is simply a, uh, a process that, uh, they have to have approval of this council. Madison Feldman with, uh, Dr. Cole is here. Madison, anything you wanna add relative to that?
Uh, none at this time, thanks, Adam.
Okay, thank you, Madison.
That's basically what we did for Presbyterian colleges, short-term, yeah.
Theirs was a little bigger than this one.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion for resolution eighteen-dice-thirty-nine, seven.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Next is resolution eighteen forty, inducement, resolution, Project Gator.
All right. Just go on then, just give your brief rundown, this would apply loans to the resolution and the first reading, uh, of eight fifty-six.
This is about twelve million.
Yes, just almost thirteen. This is a new, actually, a new industry that's looking to locate in Hunter and Dustville Park. Just under thirteen million dollars and forty-four new jobs. Uh, average pay of those jobs is twenty-nine dollars an hour, something. Maybe a couple of the half in the park.
Are there any questions?
They should start construction hopefully right after the first reading.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of resolution twenty eighteen dash forty, and also first reading ordinance of eight fifty-six for Project Gator.
Okay, we're gonna vote on them at the same time. Any further discussion?
Second, first. Second, first.
You say you did that?
I said second, second, I'm second.
Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Next is approval of our County Airport Capital Improvement Plan, and, uh, Mr. Howard?
Yes, sir. Hey, Ca- Council, appreciate you guys seeing me tonight. We met with the Airport Commission on Monday, and as you all know, every year we receive funding from the FAA in the amount of a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. To receive that funding, we have to submit a capital improvement plan that steadily grows, um, so, for the next five years, we have identified that plan, steadily grown. However, we did make some changes, as you can see on your, um, plans that you have in your read-ahead packages, and the reason why we did those changes, we moved the airport layout plan update up a couple of years. Um, the reason why is because we've been seeing a lot more interest in hangar space, and we've actually had some folks that are interested in possibly building hangars for us. Um, we've also had some interest and actually had some, uh, we actually reviewed a lease on possible tenant agreement with a business at the airports to use our maintenance hangar. So, with that being said, we are interested in changing our airport layout plan from being three years out to moving up immediately, um, and we'll use those funds to make these plans happen, because if without a plan, we don't wanna be slapping hangars up here and there in the wrong spaces. Um, of course, this is all up to you guys' approval, um, this is something that we have to have turned in, but without your approval, it means nothing, because the FAA will not accept this without council approving, approving it first. Um, now, we will actually submit this when we go down to meet with FAA, um, at Hilton Head this year, it's been a while doing it before, and this is just like last year, I'll ask you guys all, please, to come with us, um, the support that you guys show at, when we go and meet with FAA, means the world of difference, that's why we've gotten the million-dollar grants and things like that every time we've gone down there, um, so, if you can find any of your time, please ask that you go, um, and I'm here to answer any questions you got.
Andy, uh...
Yes, sir.
The, uh, the addition of hangars, hangars at the airport, uh, that could potentially lead to some more, uh, airport, airplanes being housed here in Lawrence County, the potential for tax revenue.
Correct. If, there, there are issues with that, and it's on state level, um, actually, um, some federal level as well, but, um, and there is some legislation out there, i- it's really where your plane is registered is where you pay taxes on your plane. Um, your plane can be housed right here in Lawrence County, and you may not pay taxes on it right here. So, that is, it's all right, it's just the way it is. Um, a lot of people pay taxes in Ohio for their plane, it's just the way it is. But recently, Spartanburg Airport was closed for renovations, we had a lot of planes on the field and a lot of people that were, um, housed in Spartanburg that moved us to Lawrence, um, and were not able to be housed, because we have a waiting list to be housed in hangars, all of ours are full, um, they were on what we call an apron, um, on the tarmac, it was a military term. Nobody wants to have their, their baby, I guess you'd say, on the tarmac out in the weather, um, but they were here and they loved the airport. Um, some of those people said, if we built the hangars, can we build hangars here? So, people are possibly even willing to pay for the hangars themselves, but we don't want to just say, all right, build a hangar. We wanna have a plan in place, we wanna make sure it's being done right, and we wanna make sure it goes along with economic development plan and things like that, so, if we could possibly move this forward, get the plan laid out, where the hangar should be and how it will, um, possibly, you know, be done right, you know, that's the best way to do it. And by moving these things forward and maybe pushing off the, the lighting, um, a couple of years, that, that's better than not having a plan in place, and we do feel confident the FAA will agree with that.
I'd like to say that, uh, this means a lot, Mr. Sam and Wham, we sat down with Sam and Wham just a little while back, and, uh, the approval of this plan would mean a lot, Sam and Wham. Sam and Wham, Wham has put in many, many, many hours for this airport out here. This airport is very, s- something that's, that's needed for economic development in this county, you'd be surprised if people now that's got their own planes and these businesses and so forth flies in, but Mr. Wham is not doing real well right now, his health is deteriorating, and he's thinking he's gonna have to retire and get out of that, and he's worried about somebody taking over this plan and, and, and pushing it forward, so we need to do all we can to, to push forward his vision for the future of this airport. Uh, there's a lot of things that's happened, is that airport out there that would not have happened if it had not been Sam and Wham. He has worked tirelessly with his airport in this county. So I'd like to ask everyone if they would approve this County Airport Capital Improvement Plan, so, uh...
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the Capital Improvement Plan submitted by the airport that will be submitted to the FDP on Wednesday.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Do we have any further questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven to zero.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Next, Resolution eighteen forty-one, march it down today, Mr. King, is that you?
Uh, no, Betty Ann?
Betty Ann.
Was the word request came in or...
She's, November seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, is march it down today. That's Resolution eighteen days forty-one, do we have a motion to approve that?
Some move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion and a second, any further question? All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven to zero. Thank you, Betty Ann. Mr. Greg Lim, for requests for something for the fire service.
Something?
(laughing). Greg, don't come after anything you don't need.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, tonight I'm coming to ask for a replacement of aero truck for the Joanna Fire Department. They currently have the oldest truck that is in service with the County Fire Service, we have a hundred and six vehicles, and this vehicle is a nineteen-eighty-three model Mack Aero Scope, it's thirty-five years old. This truck, and since two thousand and twelve, has had fourteen made repairs, uh, the last four years, it has failed its annual aero test, we've been able to, uh, call around and get spare parts from, uh, places that had these trucks sitting around, get parts off of. The truck has just gotten unsafe to operate, uh, and we're asking to replace that truck, uh, to take money from the fire department, and we have a hefty fund balance of over one-point-five million that we can pull from, and we're asking like two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to go out and look for them a pre-owned, uh, aero truck. Uh, this truck, current truck is seventy-five foot, we might at least go to a ninety-five foot, uh, because we got Norbord Industries and big tower we have for the car, so that's a request.
Uh, had it not been for this ladder truck a while back, we had an industry over Ploton that would burn to the ground had it been for that ladder truck. Am I not right? I can't remember the name of the industry, Hardwood Floor Plant.
Standard Plowood Plant.
Huh?
Standard Plowood Plant.
No, I think it's Hardwood Floor Plant, I believe what.
That's when they produced Anderson Hardwood, that's the same thing.
That's all the same.
So, this is something that's needed, and, um, I hope everybody approves this, but I'll ask for a motion to approve this request for approval to spend money out of the fire service.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion second. Any further questions?
I won't be able to find, find one, that seemed like it'd be hard to find or something that old.
We have, uh, two plazas been looking, uh, for replacement trucks, we found some early two-thousand models, two-thousand, uh, four models, uh, low miles, we think we can get for this money, will last, uh, for at least, you know, another ten, fifteen years.
Okay.
Uh, the Joanna Fire Service, they have several, they fought several fires at, uh, Flakeboard Plant down there, and this truck has come in very handy down there. Are there any further questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven to zero.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, time for the comment time, do we have anybody signed with it? I look for county comments, county council comments, I'll start Mr. Todd.
No, just Mr. Chairman.
John?
Mr. Chairman, I want to once again thank our veterans, um, and thank council for all the hard work on the, uh, the new policies that are put in place, and I think these are really benefiting our county, thank you.
Ms. Ann?
I don't have anything.
No comments tonight.
Ms. Pete? Well, I'm gonna be the only one to say Happy Turkey Day to everybody, because we're not gonna have such meetings in this one, is that right? Good meeting, we first, such a cute name, December.
We always have it over your hat?
I thought I was gonna find something.
If you say it, Terry. Mr. Chairman, can I make one thing?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, in case they, they're not back, uh, that we may be through with our interns. I have my two interns here tonight, Marshall and Drew, y'all can stand up, they've been putting up with me this whole semester, they've got a valuable asset, so I appreciate them, and they've been here learning a lot about local government, so, thank you, guys.
Good to have you with us, Mike. All right, we got an executive session, and then we're gonna come out, and we're gonna open our session back up, and we got an item that we may have to talk about in open session when we come out. But our executive session is a contractual matter EMS, a real estate matter, EMS headquarters, a contractual matter, a solid waste transfer station, an employment matter, considering the corner, IT, planning, and assistance boat works. With those four items, I'll ask for motion going into executive session.
So moved.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven to zero. We, I'm not gonna say we'll be back shortly, but we'll be back quick if we can, and I'd like to ask Mr. Yance and Mr. Carroll to attend this executive session today.